Any other comments or corrections?
I'll move, we accept the minutes as amended. This is Chayton Keener.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, okay. I saw Jill's Jill's hand and Ellie's voice at the same moment. So why don't we give it to Ellie in the she's our newbie. All right, that's great. Thank you very much. Great. So now we're going to dive right into our by law amendment work session. I do just want to comment that we have a very packed agenda once again. And the planning staff have done a tremendous job preparing a video for us, which was incredibly helpful. I hope everybody had a chance to, yes, clapping hands. Had everybody had a chance to to watch it. And and hopefully understand and have a chance to kind of think about where you sit on on these questions because we will be the staff will take us through some of the technical side of things. On a more programmatic note, I would like to hold any questions that come up that are not from planning commissioners to the end of our session. And so, given that we've already had several opportunities for public testimony, as well as many letters submitted. This is a chance for planning commissioners to work through the details. Of course, the meeting is public and we will, you know, time permitting, have a chance for questions at the end. That said, if planning commissioners have specific questions, they would like to ask for clarification of anyone in the meeting. That should be fine, but we do need to please just pay attention to the time. Because we we will run out if we are not careful. Okay, so Emily and Matt, you have some some stuff for us, right, on how to we can how we use this Mentimeter and how we're going to proceed, right?
Yeah, so some of you who were around for the charrette work about a year ago might remember the interaction tool Mentimeter. And so what we provided you with over the weekend was a PowerPoint slideshow and some video narration. And it covered about 11 different topic areas that we'd like to focus the work session on tonight. But we want to start with just a survey check of where everybody's at on each of these issues. We have a Mentimeter slideshow that's just the questions that we put in the PowerPoint that we sent you over the weekend. And the idea is to just survey everybody on each of those. Really no discussion unless somebody has a clarifying question. And then we can bring that result back up and use it as a jumping off point for discussion as we work through the items in the work session. So bear with us. Hopefully this will work. Emily has sent planning commission members an email with the Mentimeter voting number in it. I can also put that through to folks in the chat.
Yeah, I sent the link in the chat too.
Oh, you did? Terrific. So if you remember, you want to go to menti.com, M E N T I dot com and put that number in. And that will that will unlock it so you can vote in our survey.
Ellie, I think I just dropped it in your chat too. I think I got everybody.
And just just shout out planning commission members if you're having any trouble getting into that.
Kind of having trouble getting into it.
Are you on menti.com, Ellie?
Yeah.
M E N T I dot com, and it should be asking you for a number.
Well, I clicked the link that Emily sent and it's not asking for a number.
The link is sent in the chat directly. It'll take you directly there.
Yeah, if you just click the top one that she sent you, then it then you don't have to enter the number.
Okay, okay, then maybe I am there.
It could also work if you want to go to your phone with the link. Have the share screen up, but my screen will mirror what's on the Mentimeter.
So why don't we go? This was just our introductory slide. Let's go to the list of questions real quick on the next slide. These were the 11 topic areas that we showed you over the weekend. And the first one is pitched versus flat roof. So let's go right to the question and see how this is working for us.
Oh, Matt, this might be our test from earlier.
Oh, we should clear. Yeah, can you in the present menu just clear the answers? There we go. Sorry. Emily and I were voting. We canceled each other's votes out on pitched roofs in the test.
Let's try again.
I I am seeing the correct. I think I'm seeing the correct question and slide.
Reset.
Maybe that you're in the
I voted as soon as it came up. So when it said one, in one of that, it might have been me.
Okay, all right, let's I reset all slides. So it should have any of the dummy votes out. Let's try this again. Now.
All right. So this was our pitch roof question. All right, that's six responses, which is all we should have. Let's go right on to the next. And this was a question about the required minimum size of door yards. And there were a couple of different answers you could give here. Okay, next question. This is about building heights and whether maximum or minimum building height should be changed in the building form standards.
Well, good. Great.
Okay, did we get six responses on building heights? I might have missed it. Four, five, six. Thank you. Okay. Great, thank you. And and we had a specific question about whether a single story building should be allowed anywhere in the form based code overlay district. Okay, next question. This was about changing the maximum building footprint from 15,000 or 18,000 square feet up to 20,000 square feet. All right, next question. Parking requirements and should they be changed? And while folks are voting on this, I'll just direct your attention on the agenda webpage in your email box. In both places, I have prepared a summary table about the parking requirements in the current draft. You don't necessarily need to look at it right now, but it should help any conversation we have about parking tonight. All right, that's six responses. This is about amending the regulating plan as discussed, adding some developable area in the Essex Alliance Church area of the regulating plan. Okay.
We'll be discussing this one.
This is about regulating plan amendments as discussed for the Cottonwood Crossing area.
I would say yes.
All right, let's move on. All right, and this was another single story question specifically about allowing single story south of Marshall Avenue, primarily in the Taff Corners Associates lands as represented by Mr. Neck and Mr. Davis. All right, there's our six answers. Number 10. Sorry, nine, nine, two point O, I guess. This is it. This is about shifting the trader lane green. Again, a issue that was brought up by Mr. Nick and Mr. Davis. Okay. I think now we're on number 10. This this question, it's hard to read on your slide, but it was a fairly lengthy statement about regulating plan and official map. And the fact that in the current draft, those things need to be amended as a by law amendment. If anything is going to be moved on those more than 75 feet. So this explains that that process and asks for where you are in your scale of agreement with that statement. All right, that's six responses, and I think we're on to our final question. And this one lets you type in text. So is there is there something we haven't covered in these questions that you'd like the group to talk about prior to select board transmit or a decision on select board transmission? You can leave this open for a minute or two and if if folks don't have anything to say here, you can just say no comment or I'm all set and that's fine too. Anybody still typing? Oh, there's one.
Yes, I'm still typing.
All right.
I'll stop.
Okay. Terrific. So we'll have these survey responses available to to bring back up and share as we jump off into each of the topic areas listed on the agenda tonight, as well as, I think, some time to dive into the comments at the end here. So I would suggest that we Megan, I'll turn it back over to you and then we might just take these in order. Staff will do. We'll do whatever we can and share whatever information you need as you request it. We can call up the slides from the PowerPoint we prepared for you over the weekend or other information from the regulating plan. Jeff and Taylor, I believe, are both in the room tonight if you want to ask them specific questions. And that's what we've got for the survey activity. Thank you.
Hey, thanks so much. I don't actually see Taylor on. Oh, that there he is. He's called Chittingding County. Okay, great. Um, hi. You are. Yeah, I think, you know, I think my I think the slides would definitely be helpful. And then I feel like the Mentimeter surveys were super helpful to get a temperature check on a lot of these issues. So if, you know, I guess my preference is to kind of go through. You know, just make sure we're good on the pitched roofs and or flat roofs and, you know, kind of review. Can we can we have like the slide and maybe the survey response side by side or something along those lines? It gets a little tricky with hand raising in that case. So make sure you use your digital zoom hand, because that bumps you to the top of my screen and I can see that you have a question. And just in case you joined our our work session. After my initial comments, we are holding questions from anyone other than planning commissioners to the end of our sessions. So okay, so Emily, what have you? What are you able to show us?
I can screen share the PowerPoint presentation. I'm having a little trouble downloading the Mentimeter results.
Okay. Maybe you can verbally represent them for us as we go through.
Emily, I think if if you just re-present the presentation without resetting the responses, it'll just show the bar graphs.
Okay.
And then you'll at least get the question slide next to it.
It was it was really hard to see the results. I mean, I could see like blue bars and stuff like that, but by the time I squeezed it down enough so that I could have my Mentimeter screen up, I couldn't really read the the little the key.
Oh, it's probably not going to like it not being full screen.
Okay, that's fine, because we've got the questions here. So that's that's okay for now. And if we need the slide, we can maybe.
So question one. There are three respondents saying no change. The existing pitch roof requirement with exemptions for solar ready and rooftop private open spaces sufficient. One vote for ditch the pitch, which is to drop it as a requirement. And two votes that for another idea.
Okay, so let's start off by hearing from the folks who have other ideas, one of which is me, but whoever the other person was can go ahead. Jill.
That's me. I just felt like after hearing what John and Marcy had said in a public testimony that is there a way to do things on thoroughfares or in view sheds that we do care about the aesthetic of the pitch versus places that it could be hidden in the middle and be flat and can we accommodate? Is there any way to write that? I'm not sure. Or would we specify by like a map? But I'm also happy to vote with the first one and say no change. I just was wondering if there's what accommodate.
Yeah, that was very much in line with my sort of comment as well. And I too am willing to go for answer one and not change anything. I I was, I found John Markhut's comment about the difference of a pitched roof on a two or three story building versus a four or five story building to be very compelling. And and as I thought about, I was like, yeah, you know, flat roofs would probably be more aesthetically sort of pleasing if they had, you know, nice parapets, interesting corbels, you know, all the good architectural stuff. And then perhaps for two and three story buildings. Where pitch roof could be an option. And that that too might, you know, again, because of the scale and the the degree of pitch, it just is kind of like more balanced. And if we had some architects here, they could help us out with that, some official language on that, but but so I guess, you know, my my personal preference is probably to keep it as it is, but allow you know, but be pretty generous with the flat roof option. In turn, particularly for four or five story buildings. Discussion thoughts on that?
I like that because I think we already limit single story. I mean, that's one of the things we're talking about tonight. And I think what I don't like to see is single story flat roof. And I think, you know, I love the modern buildings that have been going up in South Burlington that are flat roofed. But, you know, three stories tall, I think they look, I think they look great.
Right, okay. Chayton, your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm the dissenting vote and I already said I'm going to go with the majority. And this is a really hard one, because I really think it's wrong to require pitch troops. I think it's right to encourage them. And I just wanted to say, I hope people realize that we say in the code that you can have a cutout for mechanicals. And with the current heat pump technology, the cutout is going to be as large as we allow. And so they're going to be sort of skirts of pitch around the outside of the building, not what you would think of as a pitch true in some ways. Thanks.
Okay, Sarah.
I would be willing to go with the pitched for lower buildings or or, you know, future buildings. And and allow a greater exception if that is, again, a doable thing.
Okay, um. Thank you. That seems to be a little trend here. Kate, Ellie, what are your thoughts?
I'm fine with that as well. I mean, I think there are definitely certain buildings that, you know, it wouldn't be ideal to have a pitch roof. So if we can, we can make places where they, you know, where we really would like to see them or on certain types of buildings. And I think that's fine.
Ellie, what are your thoughts?
I'm also okay with adding more flexibility into the into the code.
Okay, so this is kind of a middle road staff, folks. Is there, and maybe, oh, see, Taylor has his hand up. It, you know, if if there's a way to you know, encourage pitch troops when they are, you know, two or three story buildings, does that make sense? Is it? Is it sort of enforceable? Is it logical? And it wouldn't necessarily have to be all two or three story buildings by any means. But I think I think there is a sense, there had been a sense from the beginning of our form based code discussions that pitch troops are a sort of regionally historically interesting feature. You know, that said, a lot of main streets in in New England towns do have the flat roofs. We've all seen lots of pictures of those. But all of Taff Corners isn't going to be the main street. So so I wonder about a little bit of balance there. Taylor, go ahead.
Yeah, just looking for guidance. Because we've got to code this. So Jeff Farrell helped save me if I stumbled too much and Matt, please provide guidance here too. But I'm not sure we could probably craft a regulation on the fly right now. But what I'm hearing is two, three stories, we probably want to require a pitch. Four or five stories, not necessarily. Have it be an option, but not don't require and perhaps even allow that flat roof in more circumstances, not just with mechanical, not just with solar ready, not just with the green roof, but just we're just allow it. Is that what I'm hearing? Who you're on mute, Megan?
Sorry, I think that would probably suffice because because the current require, you know, the current language is to require pitched roofs, except in a couple of circumstances. So if we just relaxed or added to those circumstances, maybe that would that would do it. Is that, does that enough, Taylor, or do you have more?
That's probably not. I want to see what Chayton has to say.
Okay, go ahead, Chayton.
I I was, you know, I laid out my reasons in my letter, so I don't need to repeat them. And I'm going to go with the majority, but I did want to mention that one of the reasons for pitches was to have a feeling that was sort of unique to Taff Corners. And I think our requirement for balconies on a third of the street facing frontage and so forth is going to give a very definite feeling that plus the wide tree belts and so forth. And so I just wanted to say that I do, I agree with that reason for talking about it. And I really like the compromise idea. And I, the other comment I wanted to make is that overall, we're not going to get this 100% right the first time. And so I think you know, between when we put this code in and when the first building is ready to be designed, maybe a little bit of time, I don't know. But I think if we want to give it more time, we should put either in and, you know, make a best shot and just say this is something we're going to revisit in our first rewrite, because there's about five things in this list where I think that we need to do more work, but I also don't think we should hold up the process.
Fair enough. Okay, Jeff, can you wait? Are you going to weigh in on this? I called I called on you right as you took a sip of your your beverage.
I won't tell you what my beverage is.
I can guess.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I I I think, and I'm biased, I think the the pitch roof. And I won't call it a mandate because there are the exceptions to it. I think you're understating. They're really pretty large, but nonetheless, I hear I hear a call to take it off the large buildings. And I think that's too bad, but I just, if if we need to do that, we'll do that. I just would make a plea for allowing us to do something simple, since this is a code. And a lot of things I heard expressed could not be translated into a rule. There were sort of thoughts and wishes and maybes.
Yeah.
And we need to give something so that when the when the architects developers look at it, they are at a loss for creative interpretations, meaning they understand it's black or white. I could do this, so I can't do that.
So that could be taken care of. I mean, more clarity could be added through the regulating plan, right? So in certain spots or areas or types of streets that have a maximum of three stories. The there could be more emphasis on pitch roofs. I don't know if that makes sense.
I, yeah, my my knee jerk and and Taylor was right when he said can't craft it on the fly. My knee jerk would be to do something in the in the text. It'd be the building form standard, section three and architectural section four, I think, maybe just through. But probably related simply and directly to height. I don't really know how we would do it on the on the plan itself, place based. They need to be subject, they need to be subject to my hazardous objective first shot at it. And I don't, I don't want to do that. I'd prefer to do it something straight into the text and and maybe just pick a height. Despite all the great buildings in the world with a picture of in the history of mankind. And and find a place and cut it off. And and because we've been down this, you know, we had this discussion before elsewhere with some specific And because we've been down this, you know, we had this discussion before elsewhere with some specific ramping up of the requirements for what people do on that entablature. And I think that's gets me back. I think it's a conversation, maybe especially with Shayla, but I that's a conversation I remember. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, um, I want to keep us moving along. And so would we want to redo the survey? What what is Shayla, go ahead. What's your suggestion?
All right, I just wanted one more. So just hearing that, like, kind of ambiguity about how that we would need to be more specific. And I'm not sure we're there, then I would, I would urge us to just go with what we have right now and sort of go with Chapin's idea of having it be one of the things we revisit. And then, you know, whatever our next round is to to think about if it is height or if it is placement, because I my, what I was hearing Jill say, and I think what I was thinking of is a little bit maybe more placement, and that sounds trickier to do.
Yeah.
And that should turn around.
Okay.
And I would definitely want that, whatever the fancy words are for the thing along the edge.
Yes. Or something, yes, parapet, plus more. Yeah, Chapin, final thoughts?
You're muted.
I apologize. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge that Ian Campbell has his hand raised, but I hope you know that we're waiting till after commissioners. One way to handle it as a simple rule is to say, three stories and up, you're not required two stories you are, or two and three, you know, just say by the number of stories you're required or not, is a simple rule. Thanks.
Okay. So I kind of wonder if we should rerun the survey. Is that possible for just question one, Emily?
Yeah.
So if you if you if you if we say, okay, let's, we have to make a decision tonight. Okay, if we give ourselves that parameter, what is your sentiment about the pitch roof requirement as it stands now? Should we keep it? And come back and maybe add some more exceptions and or, you know, exceptions for a certain building height. We haven't even had the building height discussion yet. Or should we ditch the requirement and and depend on other architectural features to bring some uniqueness? So that's basically the question.
I I was the only one who voted for ditch, and I'm going to acquiesce to the majority of what I'm hearing from the people who in the third category is keep it, but add more exceptions and height and location, the two possible exceptions to be added. And and that we may not be able to get the details of that right until next version.
Okay.
Does that summarize the the middle?
Yep, I think so. Okay, can we do this survey again, Emily, or is that too hard? And we all have to go to our our own screens again, right? Chapin, you're muted. I don't know if you're talking to us or not.
I was trying. It tells me I've already voted, even though I see other people are managing to vote.
You have to refresh the slide.
I did.
Oh.
It still tells me, but I'm doing it on my phone.
Okay, and you switched from computer to home?
No, I've been doing it on my phone the whole time.
Oh, the whole time. Okay.
Which is great, because I can see the results easily, but I can't vote. So I was going to add my vote to the third category, which was that what I had just summarized. So now I'm confused. Because the first one is no change.
Right. So the first one is is leave it as written, and we will revisit additional exemptions and qualifications.
Okay.
In the next round. Okay.
Add me to that one. Okay.
Okay, so that would be six. Sounds like we've got sufficient consensus to this item. Thank you so much, Emily, for all this technical magic. Okay, and our next our next, so I'm trying to go back to my screen. Our next question was, which seat is about right? And can we just see the results again? I think there was more consensus on this, and we may not need to. Yes. The other one. There we go.
And I wanted to make sure people understand that the pictures in the code don't match the words. You probably saw that in my write up.
Yes, we did. I think, you know, for me, five to seven foot dooryard, when you add it to the seven to nine foot tree lawn and the six foot sidewalk, which gives essentially 18 to 22 feet, depending on where you are. Am I correct in that? Matt or Emily?
Yes.
So to me, that is sufficient.
When we were talking with Jeff Farrell, in other codes he's drafted, the dooryard is usually narrower. And based on those early conversations that happened during the vision plan, he drafted our code with a wider dooryard standard than other other places.
I had one question about this, and that is, how far can the balcony stick out?
Jeff, do you have a sense of that? Or Taylor?
My computer died today, so I don't have the code right in front of me right now, Chapin. But I believe they can stick out three feet from the front of the structure. Don't quote me on that, but I think it's three or four feet from the front of the structure. Beyond the facade.
Yeah, I'm I'm also embarrassed, because I don't have it open, but it's but it is more than that. There's actually a
I thought it was more like four or five feet.
Yeah, no, it's five feet.
Yeah. So if we have five foot dooryards and five foot balconies, the balconies come exactly to the edge of the sidewalk.
Yes, and that's that's, that was part of the latter mix, I think. There may have been an earlier iteration where there was one street section that had less than five, and we talked about introducing balconies and added that added to other, you know, entreaties from you and others, Chapin, about more green. We went up to five is the minimum. So it's a match.
Right. Okay, um, did anyone else, there was, you know, four out of six felt that this was adequate? Does anybody else want to further?
I'm going to acquiesce, but I did want to make one other comment, which is the the presentation from staff, which is wonderful. On this particular item, it kept emphasizing the flexibility that builder has to build two or three feet further away and have a wider dooryard. But that's taking space away from the space they can sell. And I just can't imagine that actually happening significant amount of time. Thanks.
Okay. Um, all right, well, I think we have adequate consensus on this. So let's move on to the next question and building heights, everybody's favorite topic. Okay. So we had a very handy table that showed us the different minimums and maximums in the different parts of the regulating plan. And that table is very tiny on my screen, so hopefully
I'll jump back over to the PDF, and I can also show the table up against the regulating plan on this slide. So shop front is a subset of town center where there's three and five stories. Those are tied together. Transitional neighborhood. The lighter orange is minimum two, maximum four. And then strollable neighborhood, the yellow, minimum two, maximum three, also with a smaller maximum building footprint. That's primarily Essex Lions Church and the outer edge around Cottonwood Lot of the Year.
Okay, so back to the well, let's let's just keep this slide up. But just to remind you verbally, and maybe Emily, you could read that off for us, because I know it looked like four people preferred to leave the table as is, right? And then one person wanted to decrease maximum building heights, and one person wanted to increase maximum building heights. Keep in mind that the there is some Matt, can you review that that flexibility with the sort of attic pitch roof kinds of space, like what what that would bring as a possible bonus?
Yeah, so these building heights are about the the number of full stories that are allowed. There is an additional attic story that is allowed on top of these maximums. If you build inside of a pitched roof, and there's some architectural standards around that. In terms of physical height, it amounts to about a three quarter story as compared to the others. There is some flexibility of how big or small a story can be, mostly just to deal with, you know, commercial first floors and things like that. But there is an attic story that's on top of these numbers. It's, I wouldn't call it a full story. And if you measure building height in the conventional way, even five stories with an attic story, we're still talking about a total building height. Not especially different from the 56 foot height different height limit that we have today. Steeper pitched roof, measure halfway up the pitch. You might be at 60 or 62 feet instead of 56 if you did five with an attic story.
And then particularly if we do move toward allowing four and five story buildings to have flat roofs, then that would, that would pull that down a little bit as well.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, it's going to bring you back down to just those, just those numbers.
Right. I thought it was really helpful in the in the video and slides that you mentioned that the current zoning actually allows four story buildings already where there's affordable housing or structured parking. And and so that's, you know, something I think we all need to keep in mind that it's in some cases, not really much of a change that over over what's currently allowed. And Jeff, did you have a comment to add here?
A small comment. I just wanted the planning commission to know that we're pretty particular about that attic story is a maximum pitch. So keeping in mind that unless you're quite a distance away, the pitch means it's less visible to you because it's falling away from you. We have specific restrictions on the the amount and size of dormer windows that can be to the street. So the attic story, part of the argument for it is the variation in heights and kind of call it a skyline that you'll get. But there's a limit on how many dormers. So you really are seeing dormers, not a wall of dormers. So it's it's a little bit of a hidden story, I would say.
Yeah.
Thanks, that's helpful. Other conversation about about heights. This was really helpful, by the way, this slide that you had on here. I think these are really important things for us to remember in terms of the tax base, the value of the space, efficiency of utilities, efficiency of material use, creating a critical mass of population that can sustain local businesses and also other things like public transit and parks and the other things that we want. So but I'm happy to hear other comments about building height.
Well, as most people probably know, I would be the in the corner of decreasing the the height, I am not four or five stories at all. As far as the taxes, I mean, our our taxes just went up 50% this year, primarily because of all the building that's happened, right? So I don't see that. But, you know, I think it will change the feel of the town. I I'm just very against it. I cannot. I guess that's what I can say. I'm very against it. I it is way taller than anything we have there right now. What four stories may be allowed, but we don't have any four story buildings. I would maybe be okay with four story buildings in some places, but I would like it limited.
Okay, other comments?
I just want to say I really feel for Kate and for Donna Rosier, that I respectfully disagree, because I do understand where you're coming from. And I hesitate to say it, but the new terrible hotel looking hotel is four stories.
Good point.
But with a really unfortunate, a very unfortunate roof line. And various other issues, right? I mean, that wasn't done under
That building is also on a main road that no one really wants to walk on. I mean, when you when we're talking about this area where you want to make it walkable and friendly, I just don't think five story buildings do that. If you're walking in between five story buildings, you're going to be, you know, not seeing anything except the buildings. And I mean, it's Vermont. I just, it's just not what I expect. I don't think it's what most people expect or want to see in living in in Vermont, you know, it's not Boston, it's not New York.
You know, when, in terms of kind of what it might feel like, I spend all of my workday in and out of five and six story buildings on UVM campus, which you know, are, you know, obviously a very different land use and and purpose. Some are residential, some are, you know, offices, classrooms, et cetera. But they, you know, it doesn't, you know, for some people, it might be helpful to think about this in terms of kind of a college campus setting. If if you're, you know, it's it's perhaps closer to that than it is to central Boston or Cambridge or something like that. Because there there is green space, you know, there is variation in heights. And there is articulation of the building facades and and things like that. So yeah, so that that's just a sort of another perspective. But go ahead, Kate.
Well, the only problem with that is UVM has a bunch of green space. I mean, when you walk the campus, there's green, I mean, big greens, and that is not what is envisioned in this plan. This plan has tiny little blocks of of green. So I don't think it, I don't think it will relate. Also, it's not a college campus, but I don't think it'll feel the same as that does, because they're just not the, I I made another comment that I thought there should be more green space. So I, you know, to that point, but
Yeah, no point taken for sure on the green space. Yeah, absolutely. Other thoughts or comments on this? Okay, I will just add that Alex Daley, who's not able to be here tonight, he joins Kate in not being in favor of five story buildings. And so I just want to add his his perspective to that. Okay, so we do want to redo the survey after our discussion? So we can see where we are.
I'm having trouble getting it back on my phone because I lost the number, but I'm still in the decrease.
Okay, fair enough. So there will definitely always be points on which we Um, so there will definitely always be points on which we don't have consensus. Um, and I'm sorry, Kate, I really appreciate, uh, your, your thoughts here and your, your perspective, and obviously, uh, Alex is also in that camp. Um, we don't know what the select board is gonna say, right? So, we may be seeing this again. And, uh, and there may be other, um, other thoughts and, and considerations for that. Okay, thank you, Emily. Um, can we go to the next? Survey question is, uh, Matt, I just wanna check in with you. Are we feeling efficient? Like, are we, is it a good process here in terms of going, survey question by survey question? Are we missing something that you would like to make sure we hit?
No, you're, you're, you're doing well. It's about five of eight. And I took a fair chunk of your time writing the survey the first time, so this seems to be working pretty well.
Okay. Yep. Well, we've gone through three, um, of our ten-ish items. So, let's, uh, let's stay on this course and see, see how we go. I think we had some, okay, single-story buildings be allowed in the form base code overly district. Uh, Chapin, go ahead.
I have, uh, two questions about this. Uh, the first is, didn't the vision have some single-story, uh, buildings sort of like Mo's, um, in the TCA area, um, around the perimeter of the parking lots, or did I remember wrong? That's the first question.
I don't remember. That would be a Matt question, or an Emily, or a Taylor.
I was gonna say it's a Jeff question.
I don't recall that, Chapin, myself. But that was a year ago, so I, I.
Okay, so I, I thought I had the feeling that there were small, I remember one of the, uh, slides was of a, somewhere else where there were one-story, um, buildings along the side of a parking lot. Sort of to give it more of a feel of a place. Uh, my second question is, if we were to allow single-story buildings south of Marshall Avenue, but they had to be every other aspect to the code, so they couldn't be long buildings, they, had to be up to the street, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, would it really satisfy, what, uh, Mr. Davis is looking for? Thanks.
Um, I can try to answer that if you like.
Go ahead, Matt.
Thanks. Um, there was a, there was a slide in the presentation we prepared for you showing some of the proposals, around Lot twenty-six. And that, those are representative of, I think, some of the challenges TCA faces, uh, today in, in doing some of that, um, traditional, uh, big and mid, mid-box type retail. This was the more, uh, multi-story, and then this was the, this was, what was this, twenty fifteen? Yeah. So, in the, in the current code, we have, um, some design standards, we have some language requiring placement up on a sidewalk. Um, and, you know, this, this was a plan that attempted to meet the letter of that, by putting a sidewalk in between the building and the parking lot and kind of calling the drive aisle in the parking lot maybe kind of sort of a street. You see the angle parking there in front of the large, uh, retail building, uh, near the bottom of the screen in that large picture. So, Chapin, I think what I'm really saying is, yes, you're right. I, I think that all of the other, architectural standards and building form standards that force the building to be pulled up to the street, uh, that require a certain percentage of the facade to be in windows, which, uh, the big retailers always have trouble with. Um, you know, Wit- Witness LL Bean, which is doing a pretty good job of putting a big glass door, out on Williston Road, but also has a relatively large blank wall because that's, effectively their back of house, their front of house spaces, their parking lot. They, the bigger retailers always have a challenge with this. CBS has, um, wooden shutters in the bottoms of the windows that were required on their building because it's the back of fixtures. So, yeah, uh, you know, lots of other things, uh, other than just allowing the single story would still make it challenging. I do believe that applied to a single-story building, the architectural standards in the draft code would still bring the town, uh, a more pleasant, uh, and walkable result than what we're dealing with today under the five of nine and the chapter twenty-two standards. Um, but it's probably, it's probably not everything, and it's certainly not gonna make, uh, doing retail that looks like the other retail in the area, feasible. I won't even say easy.
So, so my comment in, uh, well, I still don't the answer to the first question, but my comment about all of this is that, I don't wanna allow big box stores, and I'd want all the other attributes to be kept. But I also feel when we're redeveloping something that has a huge amount of parking, it might be most practical to put some single-story things around the edges, like what Mo's restaurant is. And so I didn't, that's why I think I answered the, the last category, which is, I'm not sure we should outlaw single-story buildings, but they have to fit every other way. And they can't be the main buildings, have to be redevelopment situation.
Jeff, do you wanna chime in on this?
Hmm, I, I, yeah, and I wanna be careful here. Two things. One, I would, sort of ask everyone to be careful about the difference between recommending, uh, allowing one story, in a certain portion like south of Marshall versus overall. And I would add, I'm, I'm just hugely skeptical about the chances to get, uh, and I like the idea too of kind of interim one-story development, hiding parking. But Chapin, I think this, the situation in all the instances I can think of, uh, is those parking lots are part of mega lease, are really long leases. And when the property gets redeveloped, it's likely to be, redeveloped, kind of, um, big time as opposed to, if anyone's gonna go to the bank and do a redevelopment, um, they're gonna wanna, you know, get some bang for their buck of the, the, the bother of getting a loan and putting the deal together. So, I, I think the one-story buildings. I, I, I like the idea, but I think the reality in the situation here of these really large landowners, uh, and long-term leases is, pretty unlikely to happen.
Okay, that's helpful.
It's very helpful, thanks.
Other thoughts or comments on, this question? And there's some, difference of opinion, but, uh, maybe we could be do the, uh, survey and just check in on that. Okay, um, that seems to be a pretty, uh, clear mandate to move forward. Again, just a reminder that we will, uh, you know, of course, there's a, this is about transmitting to the select board. We aren't the ultimate deciders, so, uh, merely recommend, recommending at this point. Okay, next, um, topic. Building footprints, uh, should they be expanded? This was the staff recommendation. I see someone, one person has a different idea, and I wonder if that person could share what their thoughts are.
Well, that was me, and I don't really have a different idea. Uh, I just didn't wanna say yes or, or no. This is, this is one of those questions that I feel like I don't really have enough, um, knowledge to answer. Uh, you know, I, so if, I know the developers were saying that's too small for the building of that site, but, and I don't know if that's accurate or not, so I, it's kind of more of a, I don't know.
Well, I think that the, um, that's where, for me, it was very helpful to have the staff recommendation, because they had kind of done that kind of analysis that, like, to me, I don't, it's like, I can't, peg something that's twenty thousand square feet versus eighteen thousand square feet. Um, and, and so I, these are where, you know, to me, this is where we really lean on our experts, and, and try to understand, you know, what are, um, their parameters. Uh, I did also, and, uh, appreciate the removal of the grocery store designation because, and I totally understand why that kind of a designation would be really problematic moving forward. Um, you know, uh, grocery store goes out of business or moves or whatever, and like, what do you do with that space? Oh, but it's twenty thousand square feet. Oh, so it can only be another grocery store that causes Matt ma- major heartache and headache, and everything, or whoever's sitting in his seat, right? Um, so that seems more doable to get rid of that grocery store exception and just make everything twenty thousand. Does that help at all, Kate, or you just wanna kind of like move on without worrying about square footage?
I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, so let's go on to our next topic.
Matt, what if we calculate community bank gas today? What was that square footage?
Oh, it is about, community bank's about thirteen-nine, I think. It's, it's, it's a funny-shaped building, so it's not actually that big.
Okay, in our, in our plethora of banks, can, can you remind me which one that is?
One, one thing I'll say on the footprint topic, just so people understand it a little more, is, um, when we test out the code on a lot of sites where we have, um, given our block sizes and the ownership pattern, and you're asking somebody to really sort of take up the street space with a building, because that's what's helping to make that walkable street. Um, a lot of folks get pretty close to the maximum allowed building length if you want them to do that. Um, and then twenty thousand gives them a little more flexibility on where they land on that building depth. Um, so, you know, you're, you're, you're applying a lot of different dimensional, uh, rules to the buildings, and you always wanna be focused on, is this gonna, gonna create a sort of a catch twenty-two? Um, and, and how can we mitigate that? So, that was a little bit of it as well, and yes, absolutely on the, you know, the use-based footprint allowance. You know, if the grocery store goes away, I'm not out there issuing a zoning violation, um, because there's not a grocery store in a twenty thousand square foot building anymore, so, just cleaner.
Not to mention, like, the question of what counts as a grocery store may eventually shift, as we have more to-go options, et cetera. Um, okay, that's great. Thank you for that.
I wasn't screen sharing us the, the building form standard, so, you know, we have our frontage, we have our depth, and then, past a certain point, it drops down, the height requirement drops down in the back. So, there's more open, um, airspace in the alleyway area, so just thinking about all that, flexibility when looking at these diagrams provides in that wiggle room.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good point. Um, the maximum footprint that ends up full height, is about fourteen thousand square feet if you go full depth and maximum width. So if somebody was doing the twenty thousand, um, everything over fourteen, four hundred and forty or so, uh, would be in the footprint of that single-story part back by the alley.
Yeah.
So, so it doesn't end up creating a really massive building, um, overall with the full height. That was the point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Okay, next item is, um, everybody's second favorite conversation point. Parking requirements. And, um, here we have, I think, finally with this, with the narrated slideshow, um, and a conversation with Matt, I finally wrapped my brain around, um, the, the parking requirements. So, this is, it's not an easy one because we have multiple variables, right? We have residential and commercial, we have shared and reserved, and we have minimums and maximums. And, um, uh, and so there does seem to be a general consensus here that the parking requirements as, as in the code now, um, which I will just remind everyone have already been tweaked. Five people are in favor of, uh, keeping the existing, um, requirements. And, uh, and one person is not in favor. So, um, discussion, questions?
Well, Matt, um, oh, go ahead, Kate.
No, you go ahead, Matt, it's fine.
Oh, I just wanted to say, I apologize for the lateness of preparing this summary table. Megan and I talked about this, uh, earlier this week. It just took me until right before the meeting to get it done and have Jeff look at it and, and tell me I was getting everything, uh, the way it is, but, this is linked on the page for your meeting tonight and in your email inboxes as well. I think the big takeaway is, um, number one, there are minimum amounts of parking that need to be required, that are required by the draft code for both residential and commercial properties. There is a significant reserved parking requirement for residential as well as a shared parking requirement, um, that taken together require two spaces per unit, um, for all residential. And as far as maximums go, the maximums are really focused on surface parking. And they're really focused on reserved parking. So, you can build as much parking under a building or in a structure as you want to. You can build as much shared parking as you want to under this draft code. What you can't do is build as much reserved parking, uh, especially for commercial as you want to. And those were some of the examples we gave you in the slideshow. Uh, and the last thing I'll say is when we're thinking about shared parking, uh, when you're driving around tough corners or you're, you're shopping in tough corners, virtually every commercial parking lot that you're in, uh, and I, I use the example of Healthy Living, because it's a new one, and I remember doing the calculations, but Maple Tree Place is the same way. Uh, Kismet Fitness Building is the same way with People's Bank next door. Uh, Maple, all of, all of Maple Tree Place, uh, is all understood as shared parking. In other words, um, there's, if you go to Healthy Living now, there's, there's a handful of reserved spaces in front of H and R Block, but every other parking space, you can be there for Healthy Living, you can be there for Folino's, you can be there for Turner Toys, you can actually be there for the Hilton. Um, that's all understood as shared parking in that approval, so, um, there's quite a lot of flexibility in this code, uh, as drafted, while still requiring a pretty hefty minimum for residential and, a, a pretty hefty shared parking space minimum for commercial.
Any other comments or questions from that? Kate, did you wanna?
Yeah, I mean, no surprise, um, I, I'm the one, but, um, you know, I just, and I've, I've stated this before, so we don't need to, you know, but, go over it again. It, it's just, uh, you know, Burlington area is, is a disaster to park in downtown. And, um, I, I just don't want that to occur here, and I, I think when you start using shared, I mean, shared in Maple Tree Place, there's plenty of it, and it, it's really not convenient if you have to park, you know, a lot of people wouldn't park at Christmas tree shop to walk to, I don't know, the ice cream, I mean, they could. But, you know, it's, it's more about convenient parking to me, because if, you know, if you have to go and you have to like, drive around for twenty minutes to find a parking space, um, not good for the environment, right, number one, but, then you're parking and then you have to walk ten minutes to get to where you wanna go. I mean, that's what I'm trying to avoid. Um, and obviously, anyone who lives in a building should be able to park their, their vehicle without a problem. So, I, you know, just, we, we do use cars, they're not going away for, a very long period of time. I, I don't see that happening anyway. I mean, I certainly hope they get, um, more economically friend, I mean, envi- environmentally friendly, but I, I don't see them going away, so I do think you just need to keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you for that, Chapin.
Um, this isn't about, uh, parking per se, but it's related, and I did wanna ask this question. It was in my write-up. Um, when Chris Snyder said it was hard to have, he was worried about the size of buildings because he couldn't put, parking underneath if it wasn't a certain size. And I, my question was, is there anything that prevents somebody from having two separate buildings above ground that have one parking garage underneath that's large? Because frankly, I'm in favor of that if it's, but I, I didn't know if we have explicitly, allowed it or not allowed it.
That's, that's the meaning of structure, right? Because there's, there's underground, but there's also structured parking. Um, Matt, do you wanna clarify that?
Well, I would just, I would just say that anything that's not on the surface and open to the sky above is some kind of, you know, structured or covered or underground parking. You know, structured or covered or underground parking. Um, to Chapin's exact question, I, I suppose if you wanted to create an underground parking structure. And then have more than one building on it, on top of it. Um, I, I wouldn't see myself administering the code in a way that, that would say you couldn't do that. Um, you, you, I, I'm not good enough in actual building code. To tell you if there might need to be some separations in that parking structure down below, uh, if it was serving more than one building.
I think some of it comes with the square footage of, of air ventilation, the type of air ventilation you have. And that gets tricky and expensive.
Uh, I would add to that. I was gonna say unless Matt and Emily can come up with something in their perspective that they'd wanna limit that, which. Uh, I, I didn't hear and I, I would have trouble believing anyway. Um, the form-based code has no. No concern about that. There's just a required building line that, you know, unless you're underground. Put your parking behind it. And the whole idea behind shared parking is that all the parking in the middle of the block is shared. So. But I'd say a, a big no problem.
Fair enough. Um, I'd like to, to keep moving on and that was, uh, I think we're going to stay at five and one. So. Um, fair enough, we will move along. Um, okay, so. This what, uh, was a bit of a head scratcher. So, um, I would actually like. To ask, uh, Emily or Matt to talk us through this amendment. I felt like things were moving a little fast right here. And, um, this wasn't quite the question I was expecting. So. Maybe you can clarify this.
Yeah, um, and, uh, I think Ellie mentioned it in the chat, the chat, that there probably should have been another question about. Um, including it or excluding it from the overlay district area or, um. The comment, um, in that final survey question we had about specific plan. Um, so this is the Essex Alliance Church property. I have the vision plan, the pre-app concept and the regulating plan. Um, the timeline of its permitting history. Some information about the grid streets and blocks, um.
This is the question I was expecting.
Oh, okay. So maybe we should pop it in the mentimeter.
Okay. Yeah, that, I think that would be helpful because I would really like to sort of get a temperature check on this one.
Let's see. Matt, how quickly can I edit a mentimeter question?
You, you can drop one at the end of the presentation.
Why don't we just vote? We can just vote. We don't need to make her do that.
Um, sorry, let me get my screen organized here. Uh, okay, so now I need the language of it. Um. Okay, so the question is, should the Essex Alliance Church be included or excluded from force form-based code? So if you think it should be included in the form-based code overlay district and therefore subject to form-based code. Can you please raise your hand? Uh, okay, so, and me, um, okay, so that was five. And if you think the Essex Alliance Church should be excluded from the FBC overlay district. Raise your hand. Forgotten how many people we have. Um, okay, Kate, all right, thank you. Um. And the option C was anybody have a different idea, but I think we've exhausted our voters at this point. Um, at least we've run out of voters. We may hopefully haven't totally exhausted them yet. Um. Okay, so. You know, this question I think was really in, in some ways the crux of the, the issue, um, that we were discussing last time. Chapin, did you have a comment?
I, I did. I wanted, uh, to just say two things. One is that the, both the concept, the original concept for form-based code and the current one regulating plan. Do not show any connection to the rec path that's coming down from Route Two A. And then. Williston has invested a lot in that rec path all the way from Essex to there and then in building a bridge. And the intent was for that bridge to be connected to the existing rec path in Finney Crossing. And it, it, since it goes all the way to Essex, I'm expecting it to be like a highway. That you don't get off and run on the street for a while or have to go through winding pathways, but there's actually a continuous path. That's for bicycles and other non-motorized transport. So, um, none of the plans. Neither Chris Snyder's plan nor either of our published plans have that on it. And it basically goes right through where we're showing houses. And so I feel like no plan that we've looked at is. Is final, is ready to be final. And so. Um, I, I just wanted to point that out. And the other thing I had to say is primarily that if, by the time. That property is completely built out five, ten, fifteen years from now, the plan for it may change. And so I would like to see it in the. Um, form-based code because, and it may get redeveloped later. I don't, even, even if there's some kind of a compromise in the interim. I don't wanna give it up. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for that perspective. Um, Matt, do you wanna address the bike path question?
Yeah, um. So I believe, and Jeff, please, please chime in here. We have a street section with a completely separated cycle track that provides this connection. Jeff, am I overstating that?
Um, not here. In, in this section. Uh, the, the bikes, as it's, as it's drawn right now, the bicycles would be. Uh, in the street. And, and I think in this section, I mean, these streets are so short. Narrow and local that, that the bikes would actually. Rule. The connection, we have added that connection.
We added that connection from the existing bridge to the north of the property, you know, in a, in a green space. We've, we've got like a thirty-foot. Uh, wide strip to the road from, from the, the, the bridge. That's what we added.
Okay, and so, um, is, is, that sounds like basically what you were looking for. Is that right, Chapin?
No, I, I, basically the rec path from Essex, you know, all the way to Manouski River down across the bridge. Is only a rec path. You don't have to go on the road. And that should, and there's an existing rec path. You don't have to go on the road once you get into the Finney Crossing. And I just don't think there should be a, an interruption to having a exclusively. Uh, not, you know, if you're gonna take your kid out on a bike ride and you don't wanna go on roads. It's the same problem we have going through South Ridge on our rec path from Allen Brook to Williston Central. I just don't think that's the way it should be.
So the rec path runs along Zephyr Road. And then it crosses in between Chelsea Commons and Mainstone.
Right.
And then it comes out and you're Dunmore Lane.
Right. And from that point up to the bridge should be a rec path. It is not a street.
So the rec path is essentially. Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it a ten feet spec in our current specifications in DPW?
Ten or twelve, yeah.
Wide enough for a pickup truck to plow it.
Yes.
Okay, um. Jeff, do you have a comment? You're muted.
We never got a chance to discuss specifically, um, it's, it's addable at, you know, changing, I'd say the sidewalk. On the outside of that perimeter street. To add the ten foot or, or whatever is necessary. Um.
So here's where it currently runs. So Chapin, you'd be looking for a spec like along this exterior street. Pardon my bad drawing here.
Yes, that was somewhere that there were no cars separated from automobile traffic, uh, since we have it separated all the way. Both before and after that piece of land. But, but my point about this is that none of the plans have handled that rec path. At least not to my satisfaction. And so I didn't wanna say one is better than the other. And, uh, neither of these suits Mr. Snyder and there's problems with each. So I just felt like we shouldn't be trying to fix something that's not yet ready to fix. Cause we. So I wanted to just say, stay with the original until we work out whatever is the. Plan that'll work.
Okay, and by original, you mean the, what was in the division plan and the.
Yeah.
Regulating plan.
Okay, yes, not that that's what should be built, but that, that's, we don't have something that's right yet. And so. Um, I feel like it, not only do we have something that's right, but we have Mr. Snyder with a concept plan. And I, I feel like there needs to be some movement. And I don't like the particular changes we made either, uh, adding development on the outside of that outer road.
So I do wanna note on this plan, screen share, let me make sure I'm screening the right thing. Yeah, on the left. Uh, the green dot is a continuation of the recreation path through the property.
Ye- yes, Mr. Snyder did connect it, but it's going through walking paths with bridges, you know, um. Ramps and stuff over that wetland. Uh, and, and curving around so much. To me, it was not a continuous path. For people who are traveling from Essex to Taff Corners. It's rather designed more for the local user and then connected so you could go through it. But yes, uh, yeah, I just feel like nothing, it hasn't been happened yet.
Okay, well, this may have to be one of those, um, points that we return to later to fine tune. Um, I would, my assumption is that this property has a great deal of uncertainty and wrapped in it. Uh, you know, in terms of possible future tweaks. Um, Jeff, did you have another comment?
Just to very remind you that, that, um, modifying the, um, the outside of that street is a incredibly simple. Tweak.
Okay, um.
And, and so I think in the end we may do that. I just didn't wanna do it if that then locked into a plan that made it the, the rec path not work. And so that's why to me this needs to be delayed for further negotiation.
Okay, well, we've got a lot on the line.
It, it sounds like, so in our list of things we're doing for the transmittel memo. Changing that reg plan spec for that outer street to include. The multi-use path continuing it from Dunmore up and around in a, in a less wiggly. More direct way to the existing bridge.
Yes, as long as it's not where there's automotive traffic. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and I'll just note that the draft official map that's part of your transmittal package. Does identify a desired multi-use path connection, um, from the end at, at Dunmore up to the bridge as well. And we have some language that comes with the official map that says, um, you know, th- these are, these are desired connections. As precisely as we can get them, but they may need to be field located. So that you certainly have your foot in the door on the official map. Um, if it's adopted that says there will be a rec path. You know, multi-use path connection from, um, existing to existing across this property.
But yes, and I've, I've sort of feel so that's likely to happen under, no matter what zoning it goes forward, uh, Mr. Snyder goes forward with. Because that's a, a already articulated town priority.
Okay, um.
Did, did we, I can't remember what the vote was, but to me, it should be in the form-based code. But there's more work to be done on, on the details, but that's true of a lot of things.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, um. So. Do we want to consider, oh, Sheila, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, it looks like all the alleys are gone. And the brainstorm. Is that meant to be that way?
It's probably the layer got turned off because the brainstorm is just kinda hashing out ideas in the code. Um, a block can have alleys going north, south or east, west. Um, and we'll get that cleaned up for the slackboard transmittal version.
Okay, but it is, they are still there in that version.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks, Sheila. Thanks for catching that.
No, I just, that's fine. Thank you.
It, yeah. And, and as you can see, my concern on the right hand, when the brainstorm is the red area in the upper right corner. Might be exactly where the rec path decides to go. We don't know. And so I was not well, wanting to change anything until we knew that.
Okay, so, um. I guess. Like, where are we here? We, we've seemingly voted that, uh, that the, that this property should be. Included in the form-based code overlay district. Um, now we are considering this very, very specific. Um, question about the regulating plan. And, um, I guess. Okay, so I see Emily circling other chunks that are not on the edge as well as. Um, making fun purple lines. Um. So.
Those were the changes.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
And, and my feeling is very strongly that it's not better than the original, but we also, it's also, the original isn't right. And so.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um. So, but why don't we, why don't you throw this question to the, to the voting public? Also known as plan commission and, um, and see where we stand. And so please go back to your mentimeter screen. Okay, so, um, oh, I see not everybody's seen yet. Be patient. Alright, so, so these particular amendments were, um, were not seen as, uh, supported. Um, but we have voted to move, move Essex Alliance Church property forward as part of the overlay district. So let's. Go on to Cottonwood. And. The question here was a little small, I can't quite see, um. Was about. Changing the regulating plan. This was a, uh, an accommodation to, um. And a, a, an effort to compromise by providing additional. Developable area and, uh. You know, again, kind of based on a somewhat, somewhat of a brainstorm. And so then the results were, I believe, four in favor and two not in favor. Of revising it in that direction. So questions or comments? Chapin, go ahead.
Um, I was one of the two not in favor and I wanted to explain that, um, in case it had an effect on anybody. And again, I'll go with the majority. Um, I like the idea of compromising with the developer who's already partway through building a project. I, I, you know, I'm not a, averse to the idea, but given the wetlands, I, it felt like it was pretty arbitrary. What we were proposing. And on top of that, if you can go back to the previous one, Emily. Um, on the original regulating plan, there's a green corridor you'll see from the south going into Burr Park, just crossing one road. And that could be a corridor for squirrels and other wildlife, um, between there and what was beyond. And that we lose that green corridor. Uh, which might be important to the wildlife. So. Uh, which might be important to the wildlife. So I I feel like it will be amended after wetlands are delineated and. You know, this will have, it will be revised, but we revising it based on what we don't know was didn't make so much sense.
Hey, other comments or thoughts? And commissioners? Okay, uh, and Chapin, that's an old hand gathering.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine. Um. Okay, so we maybe could. Do this, uh, do this survey question again. Perhaps people have shifted their thinking. Maybe not. Oh, dear. Chapin, you're moving people away from consensus. I don't know what to do with that.
We just have to go a little further.
Okay, I mean, I think, you know.
It does, it doesn't really matter that much to me because we're gonna have to revise it based on wetlands and. Um, I just, it wasn't, yeah. I don't know that it matters.
Okay, um, yeah, and I think, you know, the the proposed brainstorm version was um an attempt to respond to. Uh, concerns from the developer and um, you know, perhaps not as much as they wanted, but. Um, it was a a sort of reach across the aisle and. We know that it's going to have to change because of the wetlands and and the delineation. So. Matt's suggestions?
Well, if if I can help guide anybody's thoughts on this. You know, we we tried to provide some context in your slideshow about uh what what past impressions of the nature and extent of wetlands in the area might be. You may recall that the the reason for the brainstorm version was comments from the developer about um wanting more. Streets that had development available on both sides to help spread the cost of constructing those streets across the new development. You know, the the blue you see on that map represents a thirty-plus-year-old. Idea of what the extent of wetlands are out there. They they may not be that extensive. They may be in different places. There is some topography associated with some of that, but but not all of it. Uh, and you know, in in both Williston's rules and state wetland rules, streets can cross wetlands. Um, so some sometimes some impact may be okay. One of the more important things to me about this slide is it shows the extent of the existing approved cottonwood crossing project. Uh, down or up in the corner there and and you know, this is quite a lot of land when you consider the size of cottonwood and then and then how much land exists. Behind it. And probably the kind of place that somebody would want to spend some time master planning and then work with the planning commission on a. On a revision to the regulating plan here. Either either of the uh either the original or the brainstorm version of the regulating plan here, I think, does a pretty good job. Of fulfilling the vision. Um, I think the designations in terms of the street frontage types from the regulating plan where you're transitioning out to that lower intensity strollable neighborhood. Makes a lot of sense. Um, there are also those differences up against the burrow canal. So uh, the red that goes into the green of the burrow allowing for some development at the toe of that slope in the brainstorm version. But I tend to, I tend to agree with Chapin that it's likely that. Somebody would be asking you, the developer owner or somebody in the future would be asking the planning commission in the future to amend the regulating plan. In this location because it's it's a ways off and there's some constraints that need to be figured out. So, um, you know. I'm not, I'm not sure. Emily, you you had a a slide up that had what I said in the thought bubble.
Yeah, it was basically that about keep it as is because we're gonna have to amend it. I think Chapin brings up a good point about. This wildlife corridor. To the east and also the original intent withdrawing a single loaded streak, street along this road is that the public. Walking along Borough Drive can have that direct access to the Borough Canal. It's not in the backyard of. You know, whatever structures or houses get built along there. To keep the Borough Canal um a public amenity. So I think keeping the original as is probably is more in line with those. Vision plan intents and then expect a revision to this quadrant in the future.
Okay, that that's pretty helpful. Um, any other thoughts or comments?
To that point, I just wanted to say me voting to keep it the way it was is not at all to say we shouldn't um work with the developer.
Right, right. I mean, we pretty much have to, like, based on everything you just said. Okay, so I'm going to suggest that we we keep it as is, as it was originally sketched out and um and move forward with the understanding that there will undoubtedly be. You know, quite a lot of changes based on many different. Parameters of wetlands, future needs, um, you know, other build-out constraints or opportunities uh that may arise that we don't know about yet. Okay, next, we have. Uh, TCA, let's see, yeah, TCA Commercial Park. Let's see, there was. Strong. Support for leaving the building heights and overlay boundary as they exist now. In the regulating plan and the form is code. Um. And some support for excluding the land south of Marshall Ave from for form base code. So let's have a quick discussion on this one. Does seem that there's a fair amount of. Consensus, um, but if anybody would like to express a different view or if your thoughts have changed, happy to hear it. Or we can just move on. Okay, so um, given that level of support, uh, I'd say we should move on to the next question, the next. Let's see, oh, the Trader Lane Green. Yes, uh, this had strong support. To, and I can't quite read the text there. Leave, sorry. There we go. Okay, no, leave Trader Lane Green as is on the regulating plan. So that was overwhelmingly in place. And so I would propose that we go ahead and move that along. As it stands. Next. Question. Okay, and then with the statement. And I think we'll definitely need some large letters on this for the statement. All right, Emily, are you able to give us the full slide, given that everybody agreed with it? I just want to double check.
Yeah.
The language. This was, it was kind of a a lot to read on the fly, although we have the.
It's, it's basically that, it's basically that we want to keep it a legislative process.
Right.
And that we basically, we have to make zoning changes if there's a change to the regulating plan.
That's right. Yeah, I'm glad to see that everybody strongly agrees that 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 we should reign supreme. Uh, and keep our power, right? No, I'm just kidding. Um, yeah, and so, I mean, really, this is. This is, in my view. One of the reasons that this is preferable, and I don't, I'm not gonna. Beat, uh, you know, beat this to death, but um. This, the the form-based code and regulating plan and its the levels of flexibility. Depend on a level of deliberation and transparency that I am very comfortable with. And I think that we should hold on to that so that that has certainly been informed my my perspective on this. All right, since we all strongly agreed with that, I think we can move on. And uh. See, are there outstanding topic areas? So let's get to our last section here. Okay, um. Yeah, so certainly the question of green space. Um, now, I know you've had, you've you've had several people. Base that question and um and, you know, to some degree. There's, there's only so much we can do, but maybe you want to kind of give us a quick summary of that, where we stand.
Sure. Um, couple of things to think about in terms of green space. Number one. Uh, what is mapped as green space on the regulating plan represents a really huge step. From where the town is today in its bylaws. So. Uh, virtually all of the green space identified on the regulating plan is privately owned. The regulating plan backed up by the proposed official map. Would put the town in its very strongest position to be able to require that green space to be created in those mapped areas. Uh, and that it come into public ownership as a component of any new development proposed on those parcels. It is certainly not a guarantee, and as you know, uh, from times I've talked about it before. Putting it on the official maps means there's a process and ultimately if the select board chooses not to pursue acquisition of that land and 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 not to require it as part of development. The person proposing development who has that green space um is off the hook. You know, the hope is very much that that's really never the process and that there's usually a cooperative um process. That that gets that green space in as a public element of Taft Corners, but. You know, right now Taft Corners is just about ninety-nine point nine percent privately owned. Um, and while there is green space in Taft Corners, it's the kind of green space that uh the owner can can ask you to leave. Um, if they if they want to, including things that might feel public like the Maple Tree Place Green or or the eventual Finney Green. So it's a big step forward. We mapped some areas in the regulating plan that line up with what um was discussed in the vision plan. The comments, I think we've heard uh about this topic have universally been there should be bigger green and more green planned for Taft Corners. And so I I can't tell you there's more on the map than there is. There there is what there is. Uh, I spent a little bit of time today looking at the regulating plan superimposed over the um. Google Earth ortho photo to try to think about other places you might require something. There's probably a few and and I would throw out that like any other element of the regulating plan, this is certainly one that can be amended as the town's desires change. And in particular, if the town desires to map. Locations for additional planned public facilities, so not just greens, but you know, community centers or facilities or other things like that. Uh, it would make all the sense in the world if the town decided it wanted, for example, a a civic building. In Taft Corners to get that on the official map and try to try to collaborate to to get that land uh into town control. So, that said, the other exercise, uh, Emily and I spent some time on today. Was thinking about something that's that's not illustrated on the regulating plan, and that's the requirement for private open area, which is another kind of green space. That comes from our building form standards. So when you're looking at the regulating plan. Everything on the regulating plan that's white is uh with the exception of where the alley lays over it, that's the buildable area. And so what the what the uh zoning, what the form-based code draft says is that if you've got your lot. And and you have your portions of your lot that are white, where a building can be built. Take that area, generally fifteen percent of it needs to be provided as private open area. There's a couple of ways you can do that, but you know, just by way of example. We looked at a fifty thousand square foot lot. I can't remember, Emily, was that the Community Bank Lot?
Um.
At Cottonwood?
Yes, we did look at Community Bank.
So we looked at the lot you'd put around the Community Bank at Cottonwood. It was about fifty thousand square feet. Um, so fifteen fifteen percent of that is about seven thousand five hundred square feet. Now, if you were building a building on that site today, you'd have to pull it um up to the street. You can see that blue box Emily's got on the regulating plan. Um, which would make a little bit of room. And you'd need to come up with seven thousand five hundred square feet of green space. Now, though, it's hard to see because it's in the shadow, but in the pocket of that building, there's a little square, little green square with a patio on it. That's about twenty-five hundred square feet, if I remember. Oh, yeah. Almost three thousand. So. What the code says is you need a total of seven thousand five hundred square feet of green area. You can do a green roof, um, you know, rooftop garden that's that's usable by people in the building. You could get some area that way. You can get some of it um in your balconies as long as they meet the minimum size for balconies, but only a third. So even if you max out the balconies, you still need five thousand square feet of green area on this lot or about twice the size of that blue box um on the plan. And you need to provide it in no more than two chunks. So it can't just be sort of dispersed all over the place. We we were looking at the way this site lays out currently. There's kind of a no man's land deep front yard along the sidewalk. Kind of a funny shape. Wouldn't, wouldn't work very well uh to meet that that minimum open area required. Number one, because we'd be requiring the building to be pulled up to the street, but number two, because it misses some of the minimum dimensions. So. The long story short, you take a lot like this and imagine it developing under form-based code. The building comes up to the corner, the green space is um bigger. And more consolidated than you see here. And so when you're backing out and looking at this regulating plan. It's really helpful to imagine um that, you know, there's, there's a fifteen percent. Green piece or 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 minimum two or three pieces of green inside every one of these white blocks. That actually takes up a a pretty good chunk of that block. So remember that the green spaces on the regulating plan map are planned, public greens and parks. That would be owned and managed and and partially developed by the town. But there is other green. The other point I wanted to make. Is there's a lot of green coming along with the streets. So when you look at that regulating plan, you see those big wide orange and yellow and red layouts. And remember. That those layouts include the dooryard that's on the private land. They include the tree lawn, they include the sidewalk and the street. And so when when you're seeing that big wide orange line, what's inside of that orange line actually looks more like this. This one doesn't have the trees on it. Jeff, I think emailed me one with the trees on it after that that shows it planted up. Yeah, there we are on the streets around the Trader Lane Green. So um. Remember that it's not just what's on the regulating plan that makes up the green here. There are park spaces. They are significantly sized, but there's a couple of other ways that green space happens. Just in your transmittal draft as written today. Um, and I and I also fully agree that just like changing a street or planning for any other kind of public facility. Using the framework of official map and regulating plan to come back in um and add additional public green spaces. You know, this is, this is a piece of the Lego set. You can, you can come back in and rebuild sections of this as the town's needs unfold.
That's really helpful. Thank you. Um, Chapin, you have a comment? Oh, and Joe.
Yeah. Oh. Do you want to go first, Joe? Um, I couldn't hear you. I'll I'll go. It's that what we put on here as public green space, the private green space is one. It's that what we put on here as public green space, the private green space is one thing. And it can be, it can be rooftop and balcony plus interior space or whatever. But public green space of any size has to be on this regulating plan to have a chance of existing. And what's on this regulating plan is the maximum amount that will exist unless we amend the plan. And not all of it, so not all of it will get built. There will come times that the developer insists on something else and the town can't afford to buy it. And we will lose that green space. So I just feel like we should have more. However, I don't feel we should hold the process up. So I would just like to say, we'd like to forward this on to the select board. But with a note that we intend to work to find more green space. And an example, I don't understand why it wasn't accepted that I have put forward is that between the ninety nine restaurant and Day Lane. Under the power lines where there's currently a picnic table and a gazebo and stuff, why that can't be on the map as green space? And so I think that's the example of the kind of place that we, we need to put it because there's not enough in that quadrant. Right there, yeah. Right there, that's existing green space that we have not reserved on the regulating plan. To remain green space, and I think we should. So I, I don't want to try to amend the regulating plan before we forward this to select board. But I want to say we need to add more green space in the First Amendment round.
Okay, thank you. Other, does he Joe, go ahead?
Yeah, mine was, you know, so much what Chapin's saying is that. I don't want to get stuck with the Finney Crossing example that we were given in that strongly agree vote of like, here's what we were promised a theater and now we have pocket parks. So I think I'm with Chapin on that as much as we can kind of. Mark and note now, knowing how processes work is advantageous.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that, Jeff, go ahead.
You should be aware, there are specifications in, in the code for what happens in those green spaces that'll prevent them from being. You know, leftover. Places with dying grass. So, so the, what happens in there is, is thought about.
Yeah, I think, I think Jill's comment was that. In the slideshow. The discussion about the, the original plan for Finney Crossing and the amount of green spaces and, you know, and amphitheater. All kinds of amazing tantalizing things versus what was actually built in the end. I realized, of course, some things were moved probably elsewhere and, and maybe there were some. You know, other kinds of compromises that were made, but. I think it does, it does make us consider the fact that. We, we need, we need better tools, right? We need a better. A better process for making sure that, that the green spaces we desire are, are truly.
Yeah, why you have a regulating plan too.
Exactly, right. Okay, um, back to our slide of open-ended comments. I think there were a couple more that we might want to tackle. And just as a time check, we're almost nine o'clock. I would like to see if we can wrap up this conversation in the next ten minutes.
And I'm hoping on that one, we can just say then the transmittal letter, we say that there's strong desire to add more green space.
I think so. So two of us have noted this question about the streamlined amendment process. That I also wondered about that, the Taylor had suggested. My sense is that we don't necessarily need to. Create that now. But that we perhaps that goes into a transmittal memo or somehow is. Identified as a future work. Task. You know, Matt, what you do think of?
Okay, I have a, I have a thought and Taylor and Jeff, this would be a text amendment. In, in section eight administration. So we do have a section in the draft code about amendments to the regulating plan. And it sets it, sets out some boundaries about trying to, you know, maintain block patterns and, and things like that. If the regulating plan is amended, so I mean, I'm in eight H on page ninety three of the code draft. And. Write up, oh, sorry, H is, H is now administrative and I is amendment. Sorry, I was looking at an old one. I think. So any other proposed changes, I'm looking at number two there on, on ninety four now. And what I would suggest in, in the name of, of streamlining is. Essentially stating that the Planning Commission will review requested amendments to the regulating plan as a bylaw amendment. It's a little bit of semantics, but you know, Planning Commission members know. When someone wants, wants to amend the bylaw and they make a written request, we put them in front of you, we, we consider it. We ask the Planning Commission, do you want to take this up? We've talked about it in balance with work plan and things like that. And I think. Where, where I would go around streamlining would be to just offer the idea that we would write something in here that says it is something. You know, upon application to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission will, will review and, and make a decision. In some kind of timely manner. And, and in other word, other words, we build a little bit of prioritization that the Planning Commission knows this is going to be on its, on its plate. When somebody wants to change this plan. Taylor, am I way off base?
No, I think.
Place where we want to put that.
Yeah, this is probably where we want to put that language. I would add a couple of things to that language. One, I would want to be very specific about what the request entails. You know, I, I, I would want to know very specifically from the developer about. You know, where they're proposing to move that road beyond that seventy five feet we're allowing and, and what sort of frontage they would like along that new road. And, and so I want to be very specific. I don't want to set up a situation where it is kind of like, we want to change it. You know, have, have a hearing. And, and so I, I want to be more specific about what's required in the, by the developer to start the process. Yeah, I would want to be pretty specific about the, the timeline in which the PC kind of self-imposes the deadline to review upon complete application by the developer. You know, ninety days seems pretty streamlined to me, maybe more like one twenty would be more realistic, but we can, we can talk. You know, this is probably overly complicated, but you know, repetitive applications to might get annoying. You know, so they may want to provision there just to prevent. You know, they, they have this with, with quasi judicial hearings with stuff that actually goes to DRB. There is a provision in state statute about, you know, once there's, once there's a decision, there's a decision, you can't keep applying for the same thing. We could probably do the same thing here, saying, you know, you can make a request for, for, you know, this area, this street. You know, once every five years or something like that. To provide some protection to the PC from seeing repetitive applications. So, so yeah, I think you got the gist, Matt. I think there's some specifics to, to think about. I think I'd probably advise what Megan was saying, which is. Put this idea in your transmittal memo. Staff and Jeff and I can kind of work on some language in the background and be pretty ready to go at the select board level. If this is something select word wants to act on, does that sound okay?
Some of this to me sounds like it's more when we move into the administrative checklist phase, you know. The next step after the code is adopted is the transparency checklist for the zoning administrator making the findings. And I see ways we could mirror what the DRB does in terms of. Here's the package that's submitted, here's the questions that you answer. So the Planning Commission has having a very efficient discussion. Okay, where is this street going? And we're talking about very concrete, a couple of site plan concepts rather than. You know, more nebulous discussion where you can get right down to it, make a decision, move on, kind of like a DRB hearing. But not just mirror that process for efficiency.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Emily and, and Taylor. I have some language I can give you to mirror that. That essentially just says, you know, the zoning administrator in concert with planning commission shall develop an application checklist. Denoting the information that's required when an amendment to the regulating plan is requested.
Okay.
So in other words, gives, gives the administrator some leeway to work with the Planning Commission on what is the required sort of amount and level of information if somebody wants to change the plan. And you know, we, I think, you know, the process needs to live in the code. But those informational requirements and application requirements. Can be, can be developed administratively. We've, we've done well with that in the bylaw.
Okay.
And Matt, wasn't there the concept that the Planning Commission would, you know, they would make a vote on a recommendation to transmit to the select board? So even if you really didn't like a regulating plan amendment that was being proposed, and you could say the Planning Commission. Likes or dislikes this and here's why, and then it goes to the select board. Was that a thing or no?
I like that idea, Taylor, I see your mic unmuted.
I mean. You know, that's not a. Statute doesn't talk about that. I'll say it like that. So you know, the PC could self-impose that though and say that, you know, we'll, we'll review any application, we'll move on any application to the select board regardless of how we feel as the PC. Do you want to impose that level of? Of. I don't know, do you want to take your, take away your own power like that? I don't know if that's a good idea or not. But you, you could, Emily, you could, I guess.
I mean, because that would only be if the plan wasn't going to go through. Because if the Planning Commission voted yes on the regulating plan amendment, it's going to the select board anyway for adoption. It's just if the Planning Commission. Votes no, it's still, the select board still gets a chance to. Talk about it, I don't know.
But then what's the use of the planning commission? Like if, if we, if we advise no, then aren't we just setting up the select board for a lot of.
Yeah.
Kind of hassle and, you know.
It's if we can't, yeah. But to me, if it's in the middle, if we can't decide that we could pass the buck, but we could, we could do that anyway. It doesn't have to be in statute or doesn't have to be in the file block.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So maybe that's something that just gets resolved in our administrative checklist and our administrative policy of how the Planning Commission can work through an application.
Yeah.
Based on comments by commissioners, I would say that we're also going to have some commission initiated. Requests for amendment. So we should make sure we allow for that.
Good point.
Can amend it anytime.
Okay.
I, I had a, can I make one comment?
Yes.
I just wanted to say there's a lot of things in the regulating plan that we haven't been over in detail. And that there's probably good reasons why they're the way they are. And then sometimes we don't always understand them. And an example is, I think. There's a link between Bishop and Walnut that doesn't line up going across Route two A. And then there's Merchant Row that does line up. And those are two additional crossings of two A between two existing ones. And there may be a reason for that. And what I wanted to say is, I just feel like. There's a lot of things about the regulating plan that we'll want to look at in the long run. Yeah, right there in the middle. There's a two new crossings of sort of crossings of. Route two A and the Walnut to Bishop doesn't line up as you can see. And so I thought it was possible that. Yeah, well, I just want to say it's possible, want to make changes. The other thing is to, to Mr. Davis's point, we haven't designed stormwater facilities that are shared. And they may even be municipal. And they may, doing that may with, in cooperation with the developer or on our own. May identify places that can be open green space that's usable by the public that also serves the function of stormwater, shared stormwater. And so I feel as other some good opportunities. And I, although I feel the regulating plan is really good that it be legislative. It is also a given that we will have to look at revisions much more so in the first five years than in the next fifty, I think.
Yeah, that's great. Taylor, go ahead.
I'll be very fast. I just, Chapin talking about Walnut in particular, made me think of, of the fact that. Staff and consultant team are trying to set up a, a meeting with V-Trans. To look at the official map and regulating plan. Because obviously. Remain state, state highways. And so we imagine that V-Trans may have some comments on the official map, particularly. In areas like Bishop and Walnut. And, and you know, if they have really substantive comments about that, we'll encourage them to bring them to the select board. You know, I don't know if that means changes in the near term, but go ahead, Jeff.
I guess, I got on that one, I gotta say, come on, guys. Look, look at what's before you, Bishop and Walnut, they both exist. And they don't line up and we're not going to get them to line up unless we become Vladimir Putin's. And arrange, you know, rearrange the property lines and the existing buildings. That's, that's not a good example of things that's going to have to be changed because. It's actually something that can't be changed. And no, they're, they're probably will end up being right in, right outs, which I have a feeling they are right now, but.
Right, Bishop is a right in, right out. So I, I, V-Trans conversations, they were going to see those streets as also being right in, right out. For the, if Walnut connects through.
Okay. I would love to entertain a motion. If, if we feel like we're there. Is everybody feeling like they are ready to move to that, to that spot to consider moving this onto the select board? Or is there something remaining? Matt, go ahead.
The one thing that in my notes, I'm still sort of seeking guidance on, and maybe you want to do it as discussion on the motion is the pitched roof question that we started with. I have a couple of question marks there. So could, how procedurally wherever you want to do it, but that's the only one that I wouldn't understand what to do with just yet.
Okay.
Sorry.
What I heard on that one, I was taking copious notes on that one because I was probably going to have to recode it. What I heard was no change on roofs tonight. And that you'll revisit it. Particularly with regard to flat versus pitched. Based on structure height and possibly geographical location as a part of future work. That's what I heard.
Yep, that, that's fine. And, and I think that could be again, a transmittal memo note that. You know, that we're thinking about other possible exceptions to that and. Other.
And I think, I think we are unanimous in wanting to encourage pit roofs too. So the question is only where do we not require them?
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We're expanding the exception, we're expanding the exceptions at some point in the future.
Gotcha.
Yes. Okay, so we have. Any remaining, Jeff, is that a new hand or an old one? We lost him.
I don't, I don't have the, I don't have the suggested motion in front of me.
I'm putting it in the chat right now. If, but for some reason I can only send it to Emily, I'm not sure why, so.
Oh yeah, that's our, our Zoom bomber prevention strategy.
Right, that's great, but maybe Emily can forward it to the rest of us.
She's putting it up on the screen.
Oh, over on the screen, that's fine, too.
So shall I go out? I'd say I, Chapin, Kaneer, move that the Wilson Planning Commission, having heard and duly considered. The public testimony of February one fifteen and March first, transmit the bylaw amendment form-based code to the select board for adoption. As amended this evening, per discussion this evening.
Okay, any second?
All second.
Thank you, Sheila. Okay, folks, this is the, the exciting moment. All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed. Okay, Kate, thank you. So noted. Okay, so I think we had five in favor, one opposed and no abstentions. Is that correct? I catch everybody. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. To this very, very long process and so many details. Matt, do you want to kind of? Give us our. Summary. Moving on. Skipping the next meeting, et cetera.
Yeah. So, so first off, again, thank you, everybody. This has been a long road. There is definitely a bit of a road ahead as, as this proposed. Code change navigates the select board process. As we. Mentioned in the announcement for tonight's meeting. The recommendation is that the planning commission skip its meeting on April 5th. Take the night off. You, you did an extra meeting back in late 2021, so you're, you're due. And staff will work, I think, Megan mostly with you as chair on drafting a transmittal memo. To the select board and we would like to reflect. The very healthy debate that was had on a number of these points. And I think as, as most of you know. In the, in the opportunities I've had to bring progress reports on this project to the select board, I've really tried to highlight some of these sticking points. Because. You know, the, the job of the select board and appointing the planning commission is to appoint a representative group across a really broad range in the town. I think they've done a good job of, on that. We've heard a lot of perspectives from commission members throughout this process. And certainly look to creating a transmittal memo that, that captures. That debate and also says, you know, this is what you're getting and, and, and this is how the planning commission sees it and feels about it. And here's some of the things that. That they had difficulty with and challenges with. This is very much like how we transmitted the vision. It's a great starting point for the select board conversation. Under statute, the, well, first off, under procedure, the way we'll start is with an informational meeting, joint meeting with the select board. That will likely take place on April 19th. So mark your calendars now. That would be that second meeting. In April, also my wife's birthday. She'll be thrilled. I'll be there with you. I don't know if she'll come with me. And. That's an informational meeting. So it's not a hearing. It's a chance for the planning commission to talk to the select board about what they're transmitting and why. And then it's up to the select board to. Decide whether they would like to warn their series of public hearings on that draft. They can do that. They could also at that informational meeting say, planning commission, we want you to take this back, do some more work on it and, and hold another set of hearings. Or the, the select board may hold hearings. And in the process of those hearings, the select board may make substantive changes. If they do that, it is forwarded back to the planning commission for review and revision of the bylaw report, but it's more or less ministerial. You. You revise the report to say whatever the select board changed. They pass it back to them for, for adoption. So. We'll continue to follow that process, but it starts with an encounter with the select board most likely on April 19th. And the planning commission will be moving on to. A whole bunch of other topics that, that we know are bubbling in the background and you've seen previews of some of them. So. Don't, don't go anywhere. We've, we've got a busy summer ahead.
Okay, thank you very much, Matt. Al, we are over time, but if you have a brief comment, you are welcome to share it.
It's just a brief comment. I thought you were going to take comments from. People that were listening in the whole time. But then that opportunity never came. So. Would you, maybe you or Matt recommend that if I did have some. Comments that I just write a letter and send it to you folks? Okay.
Yeah, I would, I would say, you know, at this point, that's the best solution. You know, by transmitting this to the select board, it's kind of now their baby. And, you know, that, as you've just heard from Matt's summary, there are many, many more. Moments of deliberation and, and public hearings and conversation to be had. So, you know, this is just the beginning of the process. And so. You know, I, I offered the chance for questions. As, as time permitted, as I said, and given that we normally end at nine.
And we did. So we did, we just didn't have time to, to have any.
Yeah, we just didn't, we just didn't have time and, and we moved through the things as quickly as we could, as you saw. And I apologize, I apologize for that, for, you know, I hope I didn't raise expectations, but we did also have. You know, three, as you well know, three public hearings gathering.
No, I know, but.
We've read your letters and so forth. So please, yeah, I would say at this, at this point, please can you? Can you please?
Absolutely.
Feel free to write the letters to, please drive them to Matt and he will distribute them as, as appropriate.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Great. Good night, everyone. Thank you very much. Oh, Chiep and.
Can I make a last comment? I, I had three things. One is that it is going to take a long time before we see the results of all this work. Because projects need to come in and, and so it's, people are going to think nothing's happened for a long time. We should be aware of that. We should advertise that. The second is that we have resolved some of the friction points, we called them from when we were working on the. Vision, but not all of them. And so we still have work to do ourselves. And the last is thanks to everybody, including people like Al who gave written comments and then our. Our staff gave written responses and for us as planning commission members to see that level of detail of clarity. Is really, really helpful. And then also to Jeff and Taylor and the consultants as well as all of our staff. It's a lot of work and I really appreciate the transparency and the level of detail. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you all. And we will see you April 19th.
Great. Thanks.